I'd like to recess the executive session and we will reconvene after this meeting. So now I will call to order Monday, February 11th, the regular meeting. We are all present. And so I would like to have the invocation, please, and the pledge allegiance by Councilman Laura Tannell. Please stand.
(inaudible)
Dear God, we ask that this council be given guidance to make the wise decisions to help the citizens of our community and their families live their best lives possible in your name. We ask for your protection for those that serve our city in all areas, including police and fire, and we ask that you have special protection for those serving our military at home and abroad. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Laura Tannell. All right, we'll go to the first communications. Tonight we have three communications. Nathan Torres will start by, I'm sorry, Nathan's not going to be doing it. Debbie Deviney will be up. Debbie, if you will come forward, please, and give us a preview on the 2013 spring training. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lord and council. There we go. Well, as we all know, our fifth year is coming up shortly here in about a little bit more than week and a half. February 22nd is our first game, so we are in the throes of preparations for our fifth anniversary, and so we should have some excitement this year. We just have 11 days to go. So, right now, we've just completed volunteer training. We've trained more than 200 volunteers last week through about four or five different training sessions. This week, we're doing staff training, so it's kind of an exciting time of year at the ballpark. We get to see everybody excited about spring, and they're our biggest ambassadors. We're putting the finishing touches on the ballpark, so we're installing signage, and our new padding went in this week. We're just about complete with that. And one of our hardest-working staff members, Zizzi, has been doing school visits, as you can see in this one. He was at Imagine Avondale last week, and he's got scheduled to be all around Goodyear schools in the next month. And so if there's anywhere that anyone hears of, please let us know. We will absolutely send him out. He's going to be partnering with Slider and Mr. Redlegs of the Reds, so that we send all three of them out and get everybody excited about spring training. So this year, we're looking to continue on the success that we've built so far over the last four years, and some of our ratings kind of show this. We were awarded the, or voted, Best of Phoenix, Best Place to See a Spring Training Game from the Phoenix New Times, and that was this past year as well as 2010. So twice in the last four years, we feel is probably a pretty good thing, considering there are nine other facilities. So we're proud of that, and we'd like to just build on what we've done so far. Our high ratings of our friendliness of our staff, our facility cleanliness, and the quality of food, and generally, they lead to the overall experience, and on a five-point scale, 4.76 is pretty good. So we intend to keep it that way, and, you know, we don't, we survey throughout the season. We usually do between 400 and 500 surveys, and those are intercept surveys, so we talk to fans and ask them about their experience, and we don't pull out the bad ones, so. So what we have planned, opening weekend is February 22nd, 23rd, 24th. Friday, February 22nd is actually our first game, is 105, and it'll be the Indians against the Reds. That is the charity game, so all of the team proceeds will be going to Arizona in Action as well as the Homeless Youth Connection. Those will be split, so the, all the team proceeds, again, will benefit those great local charities. Then on Saturday, that's when our actual opening day festivities will take place, so another 105 game, Indians versus Reds. We have the Arizona Skyhawks parachute team that'll be jumping in pregame. We also have a dedication of seats for the Wood family. The teams have, at our request, marriage request, graciously donated seats for a lifetime, for season seats, and so we'll be unveiling those at, you know, pregame ceremony, and we'll have something special for them. We don't want to, you know, tell it all now, but it'll be a very special presentation. It'll include some, like a montage of the Wood family to kind of tell the story pregame, so we're excited about that. We'll also have the Millennium High School band. They were out last year, and they have a good time with the festive atmosphere. Also, face painters, balloon artists. We have a fan souvenir photo booth, so people will be able to have a commemorative photo from this event. As you can see, we did a five-year logo, so we're pretty happy about the fifth anniversary, and so people have a take-home souvenir, and that'll be both Saturday and Sunday, so the 23rd and 24th, fans can go in and just get the little photo strip free of charge. And then we have some giveaways planned, so we will be doing some giveaways to the people that come in first, as well as autograph session tickets, so for our early arrivals. They'll get something special. Promotions and discounts. We have our favorites, our fan favorites, like our autograph days, our senior stroll, kids run the bases, play catch on the field, all of the things that make us who we are out there, and we like to think that we're benchmarking for the competition, because we've seen a couple of our competitors steal some of our promotions over the past few years, so we kind of like that. We set the trend. We have brought back fireworks nights. Those were pretty successful, so we have four of those, three Friday night games and a Saturday night game. We have the souvenir loyalty cup that we introduced last year, so it's a $5 purchase, and it has $1 refills for the, all season long. The Straya Falls Kid Zone, which is our highly active kid zone with our inflatable activities and the wiffle ball field, and if anyone has seen a game, we know how active that is. Sometimes we wonder where the parents are, but it's okay. It's an open facility, so we can see them. Then we brought back half-price child tickets. Those do well. The resident offers, everybody should have seen the inFocus by now with the buy-one-get-one and the $5 off coupons, and we've seen a lot of them turn to the ticket office so far. So those do extremely well. We've introduced the Family Fun Pack again, so it's a four-pack of tickets, hot dogs, sodas, and tickets, berm tickets for $40 on the berm, or $48 if you're in the outfield reserve seating. And then our Ohio Days, where you buy one berm ticket and get one for a dollar if our two teams are playing each other. So we have five games that that applies to. We've introduced anniversary specials this year, one of which is an early bird discount, so people can get half-price seating in the outfield box and outfield reserve seating sections. On the weekday games from February 25th through March 8th, as long as they purchase before February 24th, so kind of helping out those early birds, early purchasers. And then the Senior Saver Pass, which allows seniors an infield box ticket, which is a great seat, and a hot dog and a small soda for $15, so it's a great deal for them. And then, one of our highlights this season, which is new to us, is the, as part of the World Baseball Classic, we have one of the exhibition games, and we have Team Canada coming to play the Reds on March 6th at 7:05. So we will be shortly here proclaiming that, Canada Day, and we have some fun stuff going on for that game, so we have some Canadian culinary delights, some Canadian beer. We'll be distributing some Canadian flags to be festive to our attendees, and, you know, throwing in some Canadian trivia throughout the game, so it should be a fun night for all. And then last but not least, where to go to get all your information. We've introduced the new site, GoodyearBP.com, and it is fully stocked with all of our promotions, our ticket discounts, and just all the current information, including the Facebook and Twitter feeds you can see on the left-hand side of that page. So, you know, just new news as it comes. We will be posting our lineups for each game on the right-hand side, kind of where the Indians players are on the top, so if we have any game changes, a lot of times people like to see the daily lineup before they make the decision to come to the game. So everything will be current and refreshed daily, so check it out. We're ready for the season.
Great. Thank you very much. Wait a minute, maybe just some, any comments from council or any?
Play ball?
Well, that's, that's good. Play ball, that's a good one. Anybody would like to? Yes.
Well, congratulations. Good job on continuing great things in Goodyear and also on that award from the New Times. That's wonderful. And I appreciate that you have, the band Millennium's going to be playing opening day, because I actually had heard from a bunch of different superintendents of schools and things that they would love to be able to showcase some of their singers and their bands and things like that at the ballpark. So I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. It was a nice presentation, and we're really excited about this year, and I think when you look at all the information given, you know how successful we were last year, and we're building upon it this year, and so we're all looking forward to game day opening. Thank you very much.
See you all there.
And to go along with this, of course, we talk about Canadian Day, so I have a proclamation to read tonight for our special Canadian Day and paying tribute to the people from Canada. So Canada Day, Canada Day, March 6, 2013, whereas for nearly 275 years, the game of baseball has provided players and legions of fans around the world an outlet and escape to enjoy a game known as our national pastime. And whereas Team Canada and the Cincinnati Reds are dedicated to bring sportsmanship and excitement to fans at Goodyear Ballpark on Wednesday, March 6, 2013, as a part of an exhibition to this year's World Baseball Classic, the premier international baseball event that features 16 teams from around the world. And whereas the city of Goodyear promotes and supports the game of baseball and activities that introduce its citizens to the culture of Canada and other countries. And whereas the city of Goodyear promotes and encourages those of all generations to participate and learn about other cultures, specifically the Canadian culture on this day. And whereas March 6 is a day not only to enjoy baseball, but to have fun while learning about the aspects of our Canadian friends and neighbors who live, shop, and play in our community and help support our economy. And whereas the city of Goodyear is privileged and extremely proud to host Team Canada and those Canadian descendants who support and, who support, excuse me, and root for their national team and appreciate their native traditions. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Georgia Lord, the mayor of Goodyear, Arizona, do hereby proclaim with much appreciation, March 6, 2013, as Canada Day in the city of Goodyear, and urge all citizens to observe this special celebration, given honor of my hand in these free United States and the city of Goodyear on the 11th day of February 2013, and to which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. And I'd like a round of applause for our Canadian neighbors. And I'm looking forward to that day. I think it's going to be lots of fun. The last communication is on the new online commenting website called Goodyear Connects. Katie Wilkin to present. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm really excited to introduce the Goodyear Connects website to you tonight. You know, just as an aside, while I was doing research on the website, I learned a couple staggering statistics. Only 11.4% of U.S. adults will attend a public meeting this year, and 48% of U.S. adults will never attend a public meeting. And as a city planner, that is certainly concerning, but it's not surprising, especially in a family-oriented community such as Goodyear, there are so many demands on our time, and it is so hard to attend public meetings. So of course, we have to ask ourselves questions. How do, how do we reach out to these people and get them involved in the process, because it's so important to hear from them? And so of course, it seems logical to use the Internet as a way to reach out to these people who may not have enough time to engage otherwise. But it's not always enough to put information on our website. We even went as far as trying to post questions on the city website, and it just didn't take off. And so that's when we looked to MindMixer, a private company who specializes in online engagement. And as a side note, this is the same company that the city of Phoenix is using on their MyPlanPhoenix site, which has been very successful. And so they are experts in creating sites that people want to visit, and gets us the information that we hope to get from our citizens. And so I just want to take a minute and show off the site to you. It's www.goodyearconnects.com, and you can see right when you get in, you have this banner page, and it tells you how to sign up. You can sign up with Facebook, LinkedIn. You can also just use your email address, which is how I signed up for the site, and the email address isn't visible to the public. And then as you scroll down, you can see right at the top, you can share pictures of Goodyear, and we can use that as a way to even ask specific questions using pictures. Then there's a couple featured topics at the top, and then we have more questions as you go down. And you can see these feature questions, you could, I could type my idea right in here, or I can go in and see comments that other people have made. And what's really cool is I can second an idea that someone else has posted, and we already have comments going up, and it just went up. And that's such a great way to see, you know, how popular an idea is, because people can second it, and then I can also comment in it, you know, and maybe make a suggestion. You know, I've seen that this community over here has done the same thing. Maybe we can find out how they did it. And then on my end, this little thing isn't popping up here. On the administrator's end, I can then let people know what process the idea is in. I can tell them if it's not implementable, or if I can forward it to either an outside organization or a department within the city to look into it further, or even a city board that might want to take it on, and then hopefully we'll start having some that I can tag implemented. So that, you know, so it doesn't just stop with them giving us their comment. They can find out what exactly is going on with that idea. And then council members and staff can also post right there and just say, you know, hey, that's a great idea, you know, we'll have to talk about that, and just start interacting with residents. And then I just love that residents can interact with each other, too. It's not just commenting, and then you're done. Some of the topics even have a map component with them, so we just put up a fun question at the beginning, what's your favorite place to eat? And you can see I can just find on the map and put my favorite restaurant, and I put mine, Dino's. I love Dino's. And so then again, you know, people can add on in there, too, and stuff, but there's some other topics that it can be really helpful to use the map, so people can show us right where an issue might be in the city and tag it right there for us, and we know exactly what they're talking about. Let's see. And then on the side here, we have some more information. We have a video, which is kind of hard to play on this version, and some information about the general plan project. We are using the site mostly for the general plan update, transportation and parks master plans right now, but we hope it takes off and that we can use it for lots of different ways to connect with the citizens. There's a who's listening section, so the citizens know who's paying attention, and of course, I put all of you right up there, because I know you guys want to hear from our citizens. But then we also have some of the staff members that are really involved with these projects, and it just gives a face for the citizens, so they know who's, who's listening.
I think it's especially nice to have the staff on there. I think it puts the face to the name.
And then one of the cool parts is we have a reward store, and as you sign up and post ideas, you earn points, and then we can put rewards to try and get people to get active. And the ballpark was nice enough to donate some tickets to do as a reward, and we have lunch with the mayor, and, you know, Phoenix is doing some tours and stuff, so that's a great idea. We could do tours of the ballpark and some of our other facilities. So it's just a great way to create an incentive to get people active on the site. And then, of course, on my end, I can review the topics. I can look at our users, what age they are, what zip code they're from, how they found the site, and so that'll give us, and then I can start generating reports and getting that information to management and council, so we can all use the information, too, on a wide basis, rather than just individual ideas. And so, you know, I just hope citizens really take advantage of this site, because I just want to emphasize, we are listening, we're excited to hear ideas. The general plan committee has been nagging me about getting this site done, because they really want to hear from the larger community and hear their ideas, so they are going to be watching the site and expecting reports from me on ideas, so it's certainly going to be used. And I also want to stress that this is just another tool in our toolbox now. This in no way replaces the need for public meetings. We are certainly going to still have lots of public meetings, and in fact, I have to do a plug for my open house meetings. Tuesday, February 26th, we'll be in this room. Wednesday, February 27th, we'll be at Western Sky Middle School. Thursday, February 28th, we'll be at Australia Star Point Residence Club, and those meetings are all from 6:00 to 8:30, open house style, come when you want. And then we'll be, on Tuesday, March 5th, we'll be at Mobile Elementary, and that meeting starts at 6:30. And so you can go to GoodyearAZ.gov/Goodyear2025 for more information about those open house meetings, but of course, we hope everybody goes to GoodyearConnects.com and gets started sharing ideas. And then I also just have to end mentioning that I'm the one who gets to stand up here and tell you about it, but lots of people helped make this happen. Anna Garcia is the side administrator along with me. Ramina and the entire communications team helped a whole lot, and IT, legal, finance, everybody helped make this happen quickly, so I just want to thank all the other staff who helped make it happen, because we're really excited. I think it's going to be a great tool. So that concludes my presentation.
I know, council, great, great presentation. I'm very excited. I know council's going to comment on this. Who would like Sherry? Laura Tannell, start first.
I love it, first of all. I think it's great. It gets that interaction that we've been asking for. I did have one question. Is it monitored by you or someone, or comments reviewed before they go on, just to make sure that no one hijacks the site or becomes abusive to another resident if there's a disagreement? How is that handled?
Comments are posted immediately. MindMixer does have filters, so words or phrases, you know, it's looking out for, so those will get automatically filtered out. There is a function on there to report, so we hope that residents self-use it, and if three people report a post, it'll automatically be taken down. But then that's also part of Anna's and my job, too, is to help monitor the site, and we can block users if a particular user becomes habitually abusive. We can take care of it that way.
And one more question. When you, when you sign up with Facebook, what I've noticed, a lot of the other comments, places and blogs, and I don't know how this works, might be more of a technical question, like in the newspaper, the person's, like, Facebook profile picture shows up and their name. Is that how this works when the comments show up, or is it just totally just the comments?
You know, I'm not sure. I know I added a picture to my profile, and now my picture shows up. You know, I played with it and added some comments, so it wouldn't surprise me. I would, I would think your profile picture would show up, your Facebook or LinkedIn profile picture.
Because that's how you're signing up.
Oh, it's not showing up, though. I saw my pictures.
Okay.
Just, just curious.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I have one.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Good job. I'm really excited about that. That's, you know, just like Sherry said, that's something we've been looking for, and you're right. You know, you keep having to plug away at what's going to, you know, get interaction from people, and Sherry actually asked the question I was going to ask. You know, I was sitting there thinking, so if somebody puts on there that Joanne should shave her head, and it kept getting second, 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 and I'm thinking, how are you going to monitor that? So very good. Congratulations. Thanks.
How do you do that?
No, Joe, shave Joe's head.
Well, I think it's being transparent, and it's getting information to the city, and for those people that don't attend meetings, that want to but maybe can't, or too busy, especially the, the working family, so this just really allows us to get a true feeling of how our citizens are feeling and what direction they want the city to go in. So I'm extremely pleased. I want to thank staff and all their work, and boy, have we come a long way. I mean, we had, what, a year ago or something? We didn't even have any of these things, and so congratulations, city manager, that we're progressing in this direction. It's really good, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie.
Okay, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item, and I do have a speaker card. This is on a non-agenda item.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm making that assumption. So please come forward, but let me just give you directions on this, if I may, because this is always frustrating, but it's laws set up by the state, and we have to abide by them, no matter how frustrated. I just want to say that to you tonight, that as a council, sometimes we get frustrated because we're not allowed, but the council will listen to your comments and make, take any one of the following. We can respond to criticism, true criticism, and that has to be pretty extreme before anybody responds to that. Request the staff investigate and report on the matter, and request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You have a yellow light and a buzzer, and they will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address. So we have tonight Alex Romero, and the non-agenda item is pot shop and smoke shop. Thank you for appearing again, Mr. Romero.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Alex Romero. I live at 17511 West Ocatillo Avenue, and I have forwarded information to the city manager's office pertaining to a paraphernalia shop that's right across the street from Walmart. They are selling bongs and all the paraphernalia needed to smoke all sorts of drugs, not only marijuana, but crack, heroin, and any other drugs. And I went in there and asked if I could buy spice, and the guy said, no, they're not making it anymore, but when they do, we'll be selling it. Now, I don't know if you all know what spice is, but it's a horrible drug that's legal, and it's killing people, and people are going on rampages. They're going crazy when they smoke it. Nevertheless, I forwarded a copy of the federal law that prohibits the sale of that kind of paraphernalia, but in spite of that, this city has allowed a shop like that to open up. So I'm here speaking on behalf of my children, my grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren to beg and beseech you to do something about it. You can, you can bring about an ordinance that would close these places up. I don't know how many more there are in this city of Goodyear, but I'm a responsible person. I've been before you for the medical marijuana issue, so you know where I'm coming from. So this is just one more item, one more facet of the drug thing, which is an attempt to legalize all drugs. They're already selling the stuff to use drugs. This is insane. I don't know how many of you have children and grandchildren like I do, but we've got to protect those children, and that's what I have to say tonight to you. And again, I end it with saying, I beg and beseech you to do something. You can do it. You have the power to do it. I don't. I have a big mouth, and I can come here and talk to you, and I will talk to you. I'll come back over and over again until some action is taken. The next step is I'm going to picket that shop constantly, and I have family members that will picket with it, with me, and so that's my first step. Then I'll wait for the action of you all, and if there's any questions, I'd like to answer them at this time.
Mr. Romero, thank you very much for coming for us, but at this time, we're not allowed to ask any questions.
Very good.
But I appreciate the time that you've taken to come and explain to us your cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agendas, items 6.1 to 6.2, by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approve fiscal year 2012/13 second quarter budget transfers. Item 6.2, approve extending the term of the Goodyear Centennial Committee through February 14th, 2014.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove a, yes, Councilman Pizzillo?
I don't want to remove anything, but just for clarification on the, some of the transfers, when they talk about contingency, that is, holding places, it's more for the general public than it is for myself, but just for clarifications, could, I guess, Larry, just explain those, that they're holding places, it's not the city's rainy day fund that money's being moved over?
Yes.
That's all. And again, it's just for the benefit, yeah.
If you will come forward, Larry, because I have the same concern today, and this comes up each time, so I have actually asked if we could have some kind of new additional word onto that that is more explanatory to the public, that's more understandable than the word contingency on that. So please, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo. The word contingency, as it's meant in there, does address a couple of different types of things, but basically, it is, most of those are just accounting transfers, where there's a source of revenue that comes with them, and it wasn't in the budget, and you have to have a place to take something from to be able to do it and keep your budget balanced and within the state law. The contingency fund that we refer to as a rainy day fund, which is approximately $16.3 million, I must say, for all intents and purposes, cannot be spent for any purpose and will never be included in one of those transfers. If there were an emergency, more likely a natural disaster-type emergency that were brought forward, to need that, it would be brought as a separate item by itself for that purpose. Does that address?
Yeah. It just, I just want to make it to the public, because when you see the word contingency, and maybe it's just a title issue, and I know exactly what you're talking about because of my background, but I'm not sure the others out there understand that, because we talk about contingency when we talk about the rainy day fund, et cetera, and it's not the same thing, so.
Correct.
Did that solve your?
Thank you. Could we wait for the other discussion as soon as we take a motion, and then I'll ask, open it for discussion, okay? Is that?
That's fine.
Okay. So could I have a motion in a second, please, for the consent agenda?
Sound moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, and a second by Councilman Stipp. Open for discussion on this. Councilman Stipp.
Mayor, I don't want to remove the item either, same item, the budget transfers. I just wanted to thank the city manager and the staff. This, obviously, we do every quarter, generates a lot of questions, and I appreciate the responsiveness of not only the manager's office, but also Larry and his staff answering the numerous questions that we have regarding that, at least that I had, not to mention questions that we have regarding that, at least that I had, not to mention the work session. If you look at this item just as it sits with the amount of money that we're talking about, we're talking about a lot of money, and I don't want people to think that this goes unanswered, that there's a lot of work that goes in behind the scenes, and I just wanted to acknowledge the staff and thank them for their work at that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Osborn?
Aye.
Mayor Lorr?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to, on item 7.1, approve, we will now conduct, excuse me, we will now, I'm having a hard time with my mouth tonight, kind of just doesn't want to say the words. We will now conduct a public hearing to consider approving a license agreement between the city of Goodyear and the SentryLink. So, open public meeting. Mr. Salamondo, it's your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for your time this evening. This item is follow-up to the January 28th City Council work session. That evening, the City Council had an opportunity to review and discuss the draft agreement, which is before you tonight. I do have the presentation loaded up, if you'd like to go through it. Otherwise, if you prefer, staff is available to answer any questions. We also have Michael Di Maria, who's the Director of Legislative Affairs for SentryLink, is also available here tonight for any questions.
Okay. So you're not doing the presentation?
It's your pleasure, Mayor.
Thank you. I was just going to, are there any speaker cards before we get on? Would anybody from the audience like to speak? I guess we'll close the public hearing then, and we'll have the resolution. City Clerk, read the resolution 131538 by title only.
Adopt Resolution 13-1538, approving license agreement between the city of Goodyear and SentryLink to install, operate, and maintain a cable system within the city of Goodyear.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
We heard first, a motion by Councilman Stip, and who was it, and by Councilman Barber, a second. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a comment, it was a very great, good discussion that we had, you know, in the work session, and I don't want anybody to think we're just not going through the PowerPoint. We covered all of this the last meeting, it was very thorough, and I wish the company well as they proceed in the city of Goodyear. Thank you.
Mayor?
I do have a question. Councilman Campbell?
I have a comment. Is SentryLink present?
Yes.
Okay. In our work session, I spoke about where they were going to be placing their cable, and I just want to be assured that if they have to replace the cable in our streets, that they're repaired back to where they were. Nothing's worse than to have streets cut up and then patched, and then they look awful, and they're never patched right.
Yes.
And I can only say that because another cable company has a patch in the middle of my street, and it doesn't look very good. And they shall remain anonymous.
Well, I bet we can guess.
I didn't want to, but I just want that assurance, because that's the only thing, our roads, we don't have the money to keep pouring into our roads, and I just want to make sure that if they do cut or damage any of the roads, that they repair them to the specs that we need them to be done.
I'd like to interject, for example, I guess what we need to know is, what is that? What are they required to do?
I don't know, yeah.
Because it's like when we repair a crack in a road, there's always questions.
That's true.
So with your question, I think that should be addressed, so that maybe what you're...
Yeah, that's probably what I want to know.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Campbell, Mayor and Council. There are a number of provisions that are included in the development, in the...
Contract.
Yes, in the license agreement.
Okay.
That have to do with restoration of property. The applicant must restore the property to the current standard, which is the city standard existing condition within seven days, and there's a performance bond, and also there are liquidated damages. So there are certain timeframes that they're responsible for restoring the property within seven days. There are a number of provisions that are included to assure that the property is restored.
And we'll check and make sure it's done correctly.
Yeah, they have to pull permits, and then they're inspected.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, we're almost set?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
This question's actually for SentryLink. Michael? Ironically, after you were here the last time, I think the next week, or the week, or last week, was it maybe Mesa that had an outage where, like, 10,000 customers were without service? I saw, I saw a news flash about it, and I was wondering if you could update as to what happened there, because it was a huge outage for this area, and if it was construction-related or it was related to...
There's a road expansion happening in that place, the subcontractor, and I don't know if it was for the city or for ADOT, cut our cable.
Gotcha.
And thus, I mean, they cut a fiber optic cable, took a number of hours to restore because they cut clean through the cable. So it was due to a road construction project, and wasn't something we actually did, it's something someone else did to our cable.
So it was just within, within a day's time, you were able to repair it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know what the answer was, and I saw this news flash, and I went, oh, well, isn't that ironic that it came at the same time?
I would have appreciated them not throwing our logo up there, as if we did it to ourselves, but I appreciate the question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Councilman Stip?
Not a question. I appreciate SentryLink trying to make an effort to get into the market. Competition is a good thing, and I'm glad, glad you chose to expand here in the Phoenix market, and that you include Goodyear as part of that expansion.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lorr?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Let's go to 7.2, appoint council members to the Board, Commissions, and Committee Subcommittee. So now we'll be considering appointing a member of council for the council Subcommittee for Boards, Commissions, Committees to replace Gary Gelsner. Rob Bork to present.
I'm Mayor and Council. As the Mayor mentioned, I'm here for item 7.2, which is to appoint a member of the council to the council Subcommittee for Boards and Committee Commissions. Excuse me. As you know, the Subcommittee was created in November 2011. At the time, Councilmember Stip, Councilmember Campbell, and Councilmember Gelsner were appointed to that Subcommittee. The initial term was to the end of June 2012. At that point, it was the council's pleasure to just extend the term to another year. So at the end of June 2013, we'll be coming back to you again to appoint one, two, or three of the current commission members, which would be Councilmember Campbell, Councilmember Stip, and then whoever you choose to appoint tonight. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. First, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience would like to speak on this subject matter? All right, without that, I would like a motion in a second, please, from my council.
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. I missed something.
You have emotional need to name the person.
That's why we didn't see anything.
Well, that was a send-all.
Didn't want to leave Councilmember Campbell hanging out there.
All right, we appreciate it. Let's wind this back.
I was hanging, all right. Okay, sorry.
Does anybody on the council, now we're going to make a recommendation, would like to make a recommendation to fill Councilman Gelsner's position?
Mayor?
Somebody, yes?
I would like to move that Vice Mayor Joanne Osborn be added to the committee.
Second.
We have a suggestion, or a motion, for Vice Mayor Osborn to be placed on this committee. We have a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for discussion here.
I just wanted to...
Yes?
Quite, actually, if, I appreciate the nomination, I appreciate that, and I had actually brought it to the Mayor's attention, that we still only had two people doing it, and it wasn't asking that I be on it. So truly, if one of you wanted to be, it doesn't have to be me. I just wanted to make sure we had that third person, so, for the record, but I appreciate that, and I will be happy to take that responsibility, but I want to make sure nobody else wants it.
I think they've spoken.
Okay.
That they thought that you do a good job.
Well, I appreciate that.
I mean, I almost missed naming anybody, so.
So did I.
I feel like I've accomplished a great deal right now, that I have someone named out there for the public.
I'm sorry.
Don't you love it?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so where are we now?
Okay.
Take a vote.
Take a vote. That's all I need to do, and I only have to, all in favor for Vice Mayor Osborn to be on this committee, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay. Thank you.
So congratulations, and I think you're going to be busy right away, I understand.
Very busy.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to not be there.
Well, you'll have to figure that out, Vice Mayor.
I know, I know, I know.
I can't help you on that one.
I know that.
Okay, now let's go to information items. Does anybody on the council have any accommodations, reports, or anything?
Mayor, I've got a quick one, if I may.
Councilman Campbell?
This morning, I attended a breakfast at the Pendergrass Elementary School District, which was caring for our community, a collaboration breakfast, and it was done to adopt a school and for snack, which is a program that is going out into the community to teach caregivers how to do better nutrition with the youngsters that they are taking care of. And it was very interesting, and as you know, I sit on the West Valley Alliance, Human Services Alliance, and this was just part of our networking, and it was very interesting, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. You call it snag, snag with a G? Snag? Snack. Oh, snack. S-N-A-K.
You're catching it from your mayor.
Yes, and I also attended a meeting this morning in Pebble Creek after the breakfast, and we had a real estate agent that talked to us about the real estate market in Goodyear, and she had some very positive things to say about it, so we were excited to hear that, and we certainly hope it continues, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Pizzillo?
I attended the Southwest Lending Closet Board Meeting this morning, and what's real important, and I want an announcement, I mentioned something to John, is my little Sophia sold over 300 Girl Scout cookies as a Daisy. Again, she's not quite at the level of Brownie, she's five years old, but she sold 300 boxes, so I want to give a shout-out to my Sophia.
Said like a proud grandfather.
You got it.
Councilman Stip?
Just a couple of updates. We had, I had orientation to the AMWA Board as the city's new rep, and that was, that was very interesting. I appreciate Mark Holmes, our water director, and Matt, give me, start the long road of education in water, that was great. I also had attended, and I'm not going to mention the company's name for obvious reasons here in just a second, but what sounded to be a, how to serve your constituents better, and how to better communicate, presentation, which turned more into a sales pitch on how there, and I should have known better, I'm an adult, but how to, it turned into a 3-1-1 discussion, and come to find out that 3-1-1 is already being investigated through MAG, and that our own Chris Nadeau is on that regional committee. So I think had that flyer said 3-1-1 on it, I would have, yeah, opted for something else. So you may have seen that in the council packet, that I attended that, and it was time I could probably spend better somewhere else.
It's for the 4-1-1.
Yeah, exactly. The other thing that I wanted to celebrate was, and all of us were there at various times, was the one-year anniversary of Star Point Cafe, yeah, up in, up in Estrella. It was very well-attended for a 3:00 p.m. afternoon session, but it was great to help Rose and Michael celebrate their one-year anniversary.
Thank you. Councilman Loretano?
We all attended a lot of things. There's just a couple of things I want to mention. I attended the MAG Regional Domestic Violence Meeting, and I think that's really important considering some of the issues going on about domestic violence in the community. And I also attended with the Mayor and several other council members, the Read On, to become a Read On City, it was the kickoff for that, and as a mother of a third grader, I thought that was very, very important, because reading proficiency at the third grade is very important. That's actually a kind of a tool that they can measure to see who's going to be able to succeed, and who's going to actually end up incarcerated at some point. That's kind of how they look at the prison populations, I learned at the Flynn, which I thought was really interesting. So it was just really great to see so many people behind, and our mayor behind the reading effort in the city and everything. And shout-out to, I'm a Brownie leader, so shout-out to my Girl Scout troop, and thank you, Wally, for buying cookies, and Jen's also, her daughter's in my troop, so go Brownies.
It's getting pretty competitive up here.
They didn't sell 300, mine did.
Wow. Any other? Vice Mayor?
I attended the Arizona Bioscience Roadmap, and, well, I tell you, for Arizona, that is, that's an industry that really is a good industry that's coming to fruition for Arizona, and I think that's something that, as we look at highlighting Goodyear, could be something that we go after. And just to let you know that for jobs in the biosciences, the progress, we are up 45% from 2002 to 11. This is, this is in Arizona. 99,000 jobs compared to only 12% for the U.S. gain. So that tells you something right there. We have, our firms are up 31%, and for the, for the nation, it was 23%. Wages are up 44%. The annual salary for one of these jobs is $56,000. And the economic impact for the state bioscience sector generates $28.8 billion in annual revenue, and that's about $1.1 billion in state and local taxes. So I thought that would be, was some information you would be interested in. I wanted to give congratulations to Romina and John for putting together the legislation dinner that we had. I think that opening the doors of communication was very important, and I know that in the six years I've been on council, I certainly have never had that kind of conversation with our legislatures, and I believe that that was a powerful thing that we did. I also want to give a shout-out to a couple teenagers. One of them, who's on my teen action council, actually represented Goodyear. She was with Alex Trebek on Jeopardy as one of the teen Jeopardy players. She did not win, but she represented Goodyear well, and actually talked about Goodyear a couple times. She also is Miss Goodyear in some beauty pageants, so I thought, I want to give her a shout-out. And also to a very special young man in my life that starts chemo tomorrow, and I just wanted to give him a very special shout-out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Barber?
Just a couple of things. Again, the Star Point Cafe, that was a wonderful ribbon-cutting and anniversary for them. In the last seven and a half years, I've seen that cafe change hands quite a bit, so it's great to have someone there who loves the community, they're committed to that area, and it was just a great event. The legislative dinner was one of the best ideas I think I've ever seen a local community come up with, because I really think that cities all across America should do what we did last week, just being able to understand that we're all humans, the face-to-face and the conversation, I think, is so important, and I, thank you, Romina, and everyone involved, that was great. And then Froggo's opened in Ostraya, our new little yogurt shop, and there were tons of people there, and they had a wonderful opening, and that's what the community is all about. I mean, there were so many people there, and it was wonderful to see that, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Good news. All right, my last thing I'd like to say about it is, it's true, the, Romina, the job she did on, you know, organizing that for our legislature to sit down over a dinner and have face-to-face discussion, and I will tell you, the result of that is very positive. I received a call from Senator Shooter today, talking about an issue, and he wanted me to know the progress that he and the governor were making, and some of the direction they were going in, and it allowed me the opportunity to email him back after I sat down and digested what he told me, to get, to express how our city's position is on this issue. So, there's, you know, there's something that took action quite quickly, well, met with them last week, so I think each one of those legislators that you met the other night, they were sincere in reacting to what's happening to our cities, so I'm quite hopeful. So, kudos to staff for arranging that, because it was not easy. If you think getting seven council people together and getting a little legislature together at the same time, it all make, it's very difficult, so she juggled that very well. So, city manager, any report?
Mayor, members of the council, there are no follow-up items tonight. I do have three information items. First is a heart and soul. We had the Eighth Annual Heart and Soul, 5K Run Walk, and One Mile Fun Run. Yes, you can have, I guess, fun running a mile, presented by the West Valley Hospital, it was held this past Saturday, February 9th. Starts and, started and finished inside the Goodyear ballpark. Even though weather was not the best, we still had a good turnout. 270 in attendance, with over 200 people running in either the 5K or the One Mile Fun Run. Seven vendors, and I think it's important to point out, because they really sponsored this, Tropical Smoothie here locally, LA Fitness, Eluthery Wellness Center, and I butchered that name, I apologize to them, Arizona Orthopedic Physical Therapy, CrossFit Fury, Foot Solutions and Ostraya Parkway Medical Center, as well as West Valley Hospital had their own table as well. So it was our local businesses really helping to support the event. All the vendors donated items for the goodie bags. Four different Walmart stores donated about 100 pounds of bananas and boxes of granola bars, and just really want to thank our community partners that helped make this possible. It's part of our charge is to really provide venues where we, we keep fit, and, and it's good for our public. I do have a couple of announcements, introduction on our new IT Director, Dan Cotterman. Dan, stand up, hold your hand high.
Go Lopes.
Dan started with us on February 4th, and comes to us from the Grand Canyon University, where he served as Director of IT Infrastructure since 2009. And Dan worked, prior to Glendale Community, worked 10 years with University of Phoenix Apollo Group, Bachelor of Science in Info Technology, as well as a Master of Information Systems graduate degree. We were impressed with his successful track record improving service delivery, which is what we always strive for and focus on, creating efficiencies, reducing costs, so that came through very clearly, as we had an opportunity to get to learn more about him. So, thankful that he's on board. He fills a role that when Kathy Fernandez left government in, oh, nearly a year ago now, so are looking forward to him joining us. We did have Manny Mejia, who served as the interim during that time, and very thankful for his efforts. The next one, and you just got this announcement from me, we do have a new Deputy City Manager, we did an internal recruitment, and when that reads, stand up, wave your hand. So, we have now, in addition to Bob Beckley, Winette is our, our second and last recruitment for Deputy City Manager. Little, quick information about her, she's been in government for about 20-plus years, I'll stop there, including 12 years in management leadership roles. We have tasked her with a lot of things since she's been with us, since fall of 2011. Lot of positive impacts, everything from performance measures to work, classification compensation, to our human resource capital, human capital plan, the list goes on and on. And she's been a key member as well of our executive team for budgets, so leaned on her for a lot of things over the past year. Very excited about the leadership she brings. Many of us have interacted and have seen those, those skills that she brings, so, Winette, congratulations and welcome. And Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Well, just on Winette, Winette, you have a great honor, you're the first woman that has been put in the position of Deputy City Manager, so that, that's quite an inroad, isn't it? Yeah, absolutely. So congratulations, and we all know how capable you are, and we're looking forward to working more closely with you. Okay, Councilman Stip had one more thing you wanted to add.
You know, I always throw this off at the very end of the meeting. I did have a question for the manager, and perhaps the rest of the council.
For an inquiry to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good. That's where we're supposed to be, so go ahead.
Oh, so I'm right, perfect, okay. Our next meeting is the 25th, which is a work session, starts at 5:30. Throwing it to the manager, to the mayor, to the rest of the council, should we perhaps move that to 5? We can't seem to be able to do anything in a half an hour.
I have 5 on my, on this record that you have here, so I don't know where the 5:30 came from.
5:30 is on our, it's on the agenda.
It's mine, mine says 5, so we have.
Mine says 5:30.
Yeah, so.
Can we do it at 5, does anybody object to doing it at 5 o'clock?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, that, that work session, it was scheduled 5:30 because it was thought not to take a full hour. That being said, here on the side of caution, because we do have the public hearing at 6 o'clock, so if council's available, we can post that at 5.
Was this a premonition, you put 5 on mine and 5:30 on theirs, or was it just?
It was originally 5, and then they had talked about changing it to 5:30.
Just curious. Okay, so, so it'll be 5 o'clock on the 25th, we'll have a work session at 5, and a regular meeting at 6.
Okay, question two.
Yes.
Mr. Dahlke, and perhaps the police chief or the attorney, our previous speaker tonight, Mr. Romero, seemed to indicate that we have ignored our responsibility regarding the sale of illegal drug, illegal drug paraphernalia. I'm fairly certain that's not the case, but I'd like to hear that from somebody on city That's a direct criticism, I think it.
Yes, and you could have addressed it earlier if you wanted to at the time.
Okay.
Can we have it on communications, or can it be now?
Now, now, now I'm not sure we can.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda, so I think we're probably better off reporting it back to council at a later date, and I think he also asked a question about some ordinances, and whether or not we could regulate that further, and if council would like, I can do a little work on that and, and give you some feedback on that as well.
Sure, I'm just more worried about the, he intimated that we are not doing our legal responsibility, and that.
I feel like that's, yeah.
Can we briefly just say yes we are, or no we're not?
That was a criticism, and we could have addressed it at that time.
He did, he did say that we weren't enforcing the laws, so.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna, so we're okay with this?
Briefly.
Briefly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And actually, there are really three reasons or issues surrounding the enforcement of drug paraphernalia, and just real quickly, one, you know, there's a federal versus state statute, we don't enforce federal statutes, we enforce state statutes. Also, there are numerous criteria involved with determining if something is drug paraphernalia, and just selling items does not make it illegal. So the bottom line is briefly, that, you know, there's no law against selling items, as he's referring to.
Okay, so we are not in violation?
We are not in violation.
Of our charter, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, just to remind you before I dismiss this meeting, that we're going to reconvene for an executive session, all right? So all questions have been answered and asked? All right, I'm going to close this meeting, and we'll recess the executive session. We'll reconvene.